I greet you all in the most highly exalted name of a Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
At the time of the resurrection, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ.
And we praise God for adding this resurrection day into our life.
We thank God for giving us this opportunity to come into His presence to worship Him in truth and in spirit. We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord. We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord.
It is a privilege given to the children of God to open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord.
Before we can get into worship, we will look into the word of God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord.
Colossians chapter 3.
We will read from 12 to 15 alternately. We will read from 12 to 15 alternately. We will read from 12 to 15 alternately. We will read from 12 to 15 alternately.
Bearing with one another and forgiving one another, if anyone has complained against another, even ask Christ forgave you, so you also must do.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord.
And let the peace of God rule in your hearts, to which also you were called in one body, and be thankful. Shall we pray?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord.
Gracious, loving, living heavenly Father, We once again come into Thy presence in the most exalted name of a Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and mouth and worship the Lord.
Lord, we thank you for adding this resurrection day into our life.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Lord, I thank you for all those who have come eagerly to worship you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Thank you for all those who have prepared and come to worship you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Lord, we believe that you have received our worship through our singing also.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And Lord, as we go into meditate on Thy word, help us to understand your love and worship you in truth and in spirit.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Lord, we commit ourselves into your care.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Help us, lead us and guide us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Remove every weakness from us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Thank you, Lord, for listening to our prayer and answering our prayer.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Amen. Grace is God's favor to an undeserving sinner.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
In this passage that we have read.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Paul reminded the Colossians of what God's grace had done for them.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The first thing is, God has chosen them.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
12th verse says.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Therefore, as the elect of God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
So the word elect means chosen of God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know Moses also helps us to understand the meaning of salvation by grace.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Deuteronomy chapter 7.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
7 and 8.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The Lord did not set his love on you nor chose you because you were more in number than any other people, for you were the least of all people, but because the Lord loves you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord. We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord. We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
So the word of God says here.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The Lord did not bring you because you were more or because you were good people, decent people, it is not for that.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He did not say that you were the finest people or the fewest people, he said you were the least of the people.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Because of his love towards us, he bought us out of bondage.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He bought us out with his mighty hand.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
This miracle of divine election depends not on anything but his grace.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Ah, it is not on anything that we have done.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know when looking at Ephesians 1.
Ephesians 1.
Ephesians 4.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Just as he chose us in him before the foundation of the world, that we should be holy and without blame before him in love.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
So the word of God says.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Before we were conceived in our mother's womb.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has chosen us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has set us apart.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has kept us for himself.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Isaiah 49.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Isaiah 49.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And verse 1.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Listen, O coastlands, to me and take heed, you people, from afar; the Lord has called me from the womb; from the matrix of my mother he has made mention of my name.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Before the foundation of the world.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Before you were formed in your mother's womb.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Look at the plan of God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
When you were born on this earth.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know your parents might be surprised.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Your relatives might be surprised.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
But God was not surprised.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God was expecting you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What an honor it is.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We have a God who is so possessive about you and me.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, all this concludes with grace.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
When looking at 1 John.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Chapter 3.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
1 John, chapter 3.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And verse 1.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Behold what manner of love the Father has bestowed on us, that we should be called children of God; therefore the world does not know us because it did not know him.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord. We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
So there is love bestowed by our Father on each one of us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And he has called us his own children.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Oh, what an honor he has given us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Now you look at your life.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What you wear.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
How sinful you were.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And you were destined to help fire.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
But God chose you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And he bought you out of bondage.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He gave you a new life.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He set you apart.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He called you his children.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He gave you the privilege of getting into his presence whenever you want to.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
This was the grace, abundant grace, that has been shovelled on you and me.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And this was done so that to bring glory to God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, there is, there is, there is one more wonderful verse, 2 Timothy.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
2 Timothy.
2 Timothy.
Chapter 2.
2 Timothy.
2 Timothy 2 and verse 19.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Nevertheless, the solid foundation of God stands, having this seal; the Lord knows those who are his.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
So he knows you personally.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He knows you by your name.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, I don't know, even our parents also sometimes call us with the wrong name.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Ah, they call us by our brother's name or our sister's name, whatever it is.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
But the word of God says here.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord. So you belong to a God who created this universe.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Now if you understand this God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We have just read in 1 John, chapter 3 and verse 1: The word did not know him; now that you know him, you know who he is and who you are in Christ.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
It is not just knowing and leaving it.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He knows you personally.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He is involved in your life.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, he is taking every decision in your life.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Protecting you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Reserving you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What a privilege it is.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
King of kings and lord of lords is so concerned about you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What a privilege it is.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Now you get back to again Colossians.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Chapter 3.
2 Timothy.
Colossians 3, again the 12th verse.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Therefore, as the elect of God, holy and beloved.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The first thing is, God has chosen you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Hundred and thirty crore people in India.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And how many are there today worshiping the Lord?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Those who are chosen people only worship the Lord.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Now when you get back to the same verse here.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Therefore, as the elect of God, holy and beloved.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The word of God says.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
That God not only chose us, but he also set us apart.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
That means.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The word holy means.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has set us apart to be holy people.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Because we have trusted God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We have been set apart from the world.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We have set apart from the world unto God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Oh, what does that mean?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
It means, okay, you, you are the world, you are also the world, you, you come here, you come here, you go; that's the way it is set apart.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
One by one.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
It was not a lot that God chose.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Oh, he has called so many chosen few, only a remnant are chosen.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Chosen people are you and I.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You must understand this love of God, this concept of God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He considers you worthy to be called by him.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Well, look at 1 Corinthians.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
6.
19 and 20.
We pray that the word of God says.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You have been bought at a good price, and don't you know you are not your own?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has purchased us in the market of, from sin he has purchased us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We were slaves to sin.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And he paid a precious price of his son; he purchased you and me.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord. You know, out of hundred and thirty crores of people in India, I think there might be only around one or two percent who are called Christians.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
That means two crore sixty lakhs are Christians.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Out of these two crore sixty lakhs, how many are born again?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
How many are the chosen people?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Very few people.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You are in it.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What a privilege it is.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know what you wear and what you are today in Christ.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He loved you so much.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
That he has given his son on the cross to die for you and me.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He agreed for the deal, that I give my son, you give my children.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
I want these people.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
They are my people.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
My chosen people.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
I have called them.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
I have set them apart for my sake.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
I have kept them so that they will glorify me.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, salvation sets a believer apart exclusively for God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We are exclusive for God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You are in it.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Why should you be there?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What have you done for the Lord?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Is there anything attractive in you towards God?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Nothing good in us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The word of God says, not one is righteous.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
All have sinned.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
From this, he has chosen us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What, what are we trying to rather understand here?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
When God has done all this.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
When he has chosen us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has set us apart.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has become precious in his sight.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has given us salvation.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has given us a new life.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And what are we doing?
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We have received everything.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And but not two words of thank you is not coming up.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, in this 12th verse he says.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Therefore, as the elect of God, holy and beloved.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He loved us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
So as the believer grows in his love.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, as he grows in his love, he will grow in a desire to obey God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He will start obeying God, he will start worshiping God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He will start working in the newness of life that he has in Christ.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
When it's the 13th verse.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Bearing with one another and forgiving one another.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has forgiven us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Having forgiven all our trespasses.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Remember, God's forgiveness is complete and final.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
It is not conditional, neither it is partial.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Our God has completely forgiven us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, he tells in Jeremiah.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He says, I will not remember your sins anymore.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Jeremiah 31 and verse 34.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He says, I will not remember your sins anymore.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has forgiven us like that.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Isaiah 44 and verse 22.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
The word of God says.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has blot out our transgressions like a thick cloud.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Isaiah 38 and verse 17.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He said, I have cast all your sins behind my back.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Psalms 103 and verse 12.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He said, I will remove your transgressions as far as east is from the west.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And last night we have seen Mica 7 and verse 19.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He said, I have cast all your sins into the depths of the sea.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
A total forgiveness.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He will never remember anything.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Even though we remember so many things.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
But when we get into the presence of God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He doesn't remember your sins.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
He has forgiven you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And the forgiveness is complete.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And all this was possible because of the sacrifice made on the cross.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Imagine that pain and agony Lord Jesus took on the cross for you and me.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Ephesians 4.
Ephesians 1.
And verse 32.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
4:32.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And be kind to one another, tender-hearted, forgiving one another, even as Christ forgave you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
So the word of God says.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has forgiven us for Christ.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Not for our own sake.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
It is only for Christ.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
What Lord Jesus did on the cross.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
You know, God has chosen us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has set us apart.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has loved us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
God has forgiven us.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
And all this adds up to grace.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Now because of these gracious blessings.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We as believers have some solemn responsibility before God.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord. We have the responsibility of worshiping the Lord.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Praise God for what he has done for you.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Let's look into one verse.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.
Jude.
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 Verse 1.
Jude.
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 Jude, a born servant of Jesus Christ and brother of James, to those who are called, sanctified by God the Father, and preserved in Jesus Christ.
We pray that the Lord will open their hearts and minds and worship the Lord.